Good evening and welcome to the special presentations of the city of Moreno Valley. On November 7th, 2017, it's 5:38 PM. And the first order of business is the Business Spotlight. And Councilman Cabrera will be speaking and recognizing Fruity Tart Natural Frozen Yogurt.
Good evening, everyone. Thank you for your patience, once again. So tonight, we are recognizing Fruity Tart. They actually are located in District 4, in a really nice plaza. We're gonna get an IHOP there pretty soon, just to let you know. But located at 16110 Paris Boulevard, Fruity Tart Natural Frozen Yogurt offers 15 savory flavors like chocolate, vanilla, cake batter, mango, cotton candy, and raspberry pomegranate. They also have more than 40 toppings, so customers can create virtually endless flavor combinations. As a Moreno Valley resident, the owner prides himself on being the only business in the city that offers dragon breath. A fun and exciting new food trend that takes small cereal puffs and infuses them with liquid nitrogen to create a fun smoky illusion as you eat them. They also offer boboties, smoothies, and custom creations like pineapple and coconut flavored yogurt, made from scratch using their own unique ingredients. Today, we recognize Fruity Tart Natural Frozen Yogurt with this Business Spotlight video. Please roll the video.
My name is Sunny. The name of our business is Fruity Tart Natural Frozen Yogurt. We have about 10 different flavors to choose from and 57 toppings. We also have dragon breath. What the dragon breath, they're actually cereal puff, and we use the liquid nitrogen to get the process ready. Every bite that you take, they whip rice. For the best yogurt in town, bring your families and friends to Fruity Tart, and don't forget to try the dragon breath.
Representing the business tonight is owner Shabir Sunny Bashir. If you can please join me up here at the mic. And let me grab this right over here. It is my pleasure to present the Business Spotlight certificate. That also comes with a DVD and a flash drive, so you can share that with any of your friends, and it looks like you have your family here as well. That's for you to take home.
Thank you, guys.
And would you like to say a couple of words?
Now we're being in front of a mic, so if you can hear me, okay, that's wonderful. I just wanted to say thank you so much for having me here, and love this place, amazing, and you know, it's a great opportunity for us to city, helping us out with the small businesses, you know, event like this right here. So, I don't know if I said it right or not, but confused, first time. But thank you.
Well, thank you so much, Fruity Tart Natural Frozen Yogurt, for bringing your business to the wonderful city of Moreno Valley. Next on the Business Spotlight is Paris House of Crepes, located at 1212 Day Street in the northern parking lot of the Canyon Springs Shopping Center. Paris House of Crepes offers a delicious crepe ranging from savory to sweet delights, hot and cold tasty sandwiches, and latte art cafes. They pride themselves on their exceptional customer service, fresh ingredients, and passed down recipes like their Viva la France crepe, made from shrimp, red bell peppers, and Parmesan cheese, sauteed in wine cream sauce, or the Royal Crepe, made with fresh strawberries, bananas, chocolate cream, powdered sugar, and drizzled in Nutella. They stand out by offering food that looks as good as it tastes. Paris House of Crepes offers gluten-free crepes and catering that is available with the option of a crepe station. Today, we recognize Paris House of Crepes with this Business Spotlight video. Please roll the video.
In search of a taste of Paris? At Paris House of Crepes, we offer delicious crepes, ranging from savory to sweet delights. We feature the finest crepes this side of the Atlantic, using the freshest ingredients and homemade recipes passed down for generations. We've created more than 20 delicious varieties of crepes. We pride ourselves in our exceptional customer service and offer a truly exquisite experience. Paris House of Crepes, the taste of Paris, right here in Moreno Valley.
If we could have Mr. Mauricio Arzate to please come up. Okay, on behalf of the city council, city of Moreno Valley, we're presenting you with this certificate. And the video that you just watched is on these DVDs, and you can play them on Facebook, on your website, however you like. So congratulations and thank you. Would you like to say some words?
Thank you, yes, welcome to the Paris House of Crepes. If you wanna try a new cuisine from France, you're very welcome.
Okay, once again, thank you. Oh, let me take a picture. Okay, next on the agenda is the second presentation will be the Officer of the Third Quarter. Officer Said Assisiun and Mayor Gutierrez will provide the initial introduction and award, and invite Chief Ontiveros to speak.
If I could have the officer come right up here, and then we'll have Chief Ontiveros provide an introduction.
Thank you, Mayor. This evening, I'd like to introduce to you Deputy, or I'm sorry, Officer Said Assisiun. He's currently assigned to Watch One, which you might commonly know as Graveyard. He gets to work through the night when the rest of us are asleep. He was nominated for this award based on his very proactive activity, or approach to the job, and the fact that he's a top producer among his peers. He's relatively new to the job here in Moreno Valley, but he has a great eagerness to learn, and he is never afraid to ask questions and seek out resources. During this particular quarter, Officer Assisiun responded to a report of shots fired in Moreno Valley. The suspect called and reported he was engaged in an exchange of gunfire with suspects that were at his residence to kill him. Officer Assisiun took lead and directed officers to set a perimeter, and the suspect was called out and taken into custody without any significant incident. Suspect was wearing body armor, holsters for firearms, and magazine pouches for an AR-15 rifle. AR-15 rifles unfortunately have been in the news lately. You can imagine their concern. A safety sweep was conducted of the residence, and an AR-15 rifle was in fact located inside, as well as other items such as handgun, two inert hand grenades, and several high-capacity magazines, along with hundreds of rounds of ammunition. Through his investigation, Officer Assisiun determined the suspect was suffering from drug-induced hallucinations and was engaged in a shootout with imaginary suspects. The suspect was arrested, and the neighborhood was rendered safe. It's enthusiasm like that, to just take any kind of a call, no matter how challenging, that earned Officer Assisiun the nomination this quarter. And I could go on and on, but I just want you to know, it's this kind of enthusiasm that we look for in our officers and that you should look for in your first responders throughout the city. He certainly sets an example for others to follow. So with that, I introduce to you Officer Assisiun, Officer of the Third Quarter for 2017.
Wanted to say to you that you play an integral role in maintaining the peace and safety in our community, and through that leadership as well, and what you've done. I mean, that's just amazing in keeping our city safe. So we'd like to give you this certificate of recognition for you, for Officer of the Third Quarter, and then also some of these as well. Okay, and would you like to say a few words?
Sure, thank you. I'd like to thank the captains, lieutenants, sergeants for their continued support. I'd like to thank my family, Pamela, my mother, for being there by my side. And last but not least, my coworkers. I know I've only been at the station for a little over a year, but they've truly been responsible for helping me out, guiding me, and teaching me everything I need to know to succeed at this station. It's been an honor. I've learned a lot, and I hope that I can continue to strive to represent the city well, to continue to make a difference, and to continue to serve the citizens of Moreno Valley, and that hopefully, as the years go on, I can make a bigger impact and continue to make a difference. Thank you very much, appreciate it.
Once again, congratulations to our Officer of the Third Quarter, Officer Said Assisiun. Next is the Employee of the Quarter for the Third Quarter, Josh Froman, who will be presented by our Mayor Gutierrez.
Okay, first, I would like to have Josh, if you can come up here with us. Congratulations. I just want to say a few words about Josh. Number one, we want to recognize him for his outstanding service and work. He's been with the city of Moreno Valley for 11 years, six years in the Capital Projects Division. In his time with the city, his strong work ethic has built a reputation for working quickly and efficiently. Josh is the team leader for preparation of current capital improvement, the current capital improvement plan budget book. He assists with in-house design for the citywide Safe Route to School Improvement Project, Moreno Valley Ranch ITS Project, and has also helped with various street improvement projects for the division. Josh's contributions have saved amounts of time and money on these projects. Additionally, and this is really great news for our city, Josh was actually the individual that designed and provided the plans for the Moreno Valley Satellite Library that's opening up this December. So, thank you so much. And will hopefully get an opportunity to tour the Satellite Library. Josh is a model in terms of customer care standards. He always offers help to other staff members and provides same-day response to external and internal clients. Josh regularly coordinates and maintains excellent relationships with city GIS and facility staff, and he mentors other workers in various programs. Josh just recently passed a professional engineering, and I guess you guys call it PE?
PE, professional engineering.
PE, okay. I was thinking, okay, is it like PE, like physical education, but yeah, professional engineering. To become a registered civil engineer and continues his success by tutoring city staff, candidates who are going to take the PE exam. No is not in his vocabulary. Josh is a hard worker and often puts in extra hours each day to complete his assignments. Most importantly, he is a joy to work around with and be around. And I just want to say, you know, he's come to my office to present certain capital improvement issues, and he's been very, very thorough, and he's been able to really articulate what he needs to say, so thank you so much. And so, on behalf of the Moreno Valley City Council in my office, we would like to congratulate Josh for all of his achievements and present him with this plaque. Can you get a round of applause? And if we could have Josh, if you want to say a few words?
Sure, yeah, please. Thank you, Mayor Gutierrez. This is truly an honor. I really appreciate this recognition. This is my family. This is my wife, Jolene, my 13-month-old Emily, four-year-old Jason, and seven-year-old Kevin. So I guess I'll start with thank yous, if you don't mind. Thank you again, Mayor, for the kind words. Thank you, Henry. Thank you, council members, for this recognition. Thank you to my fellow city employees, of course. Thank you to the public, we have some residents here, thank you. And then I also want to thank my coworkers who nominated me. And then lastly, if I may, I'll thank the committee that selected me. So I think the committee is made up of previous employees of the quarter, so I look forward to being on that committee in the future. When I first heard that I was selected, and when I hear all those kind words that you say, the humble part of me just thinks that's just, you know, normal daily duties. So it's a privilege to know that my fellow coworkers don't feel that way, otherwise I wouldn't be here receiving this. So it's nice to know that my efforts and work duties are recognized as above and beyond, so thank you for that. And lastly, I've seen enough of these Employee of the Quarter speeches to know that most people say this, but I'm gonna go ahead and say it anyway, because it's important. I'm the fortunate one, you know, up here tonight getting this recognition, but really all the efforts and goals and accomplishments that you listed are really a team effort. So I just want to thank my fellow capital improvement, Capital Projects employees, team members, and quite frankly, all of Moreno Valley team members. So, thank you.
We also have here with us tonight the Capital Projects Division Manager, Henry Noe. If we could have you tell us a little bit about Josh.
Good evening, everybody. Good evening, Mayor, council members, city manager, everybody attending this meeting today. I worked with Josh for 11 years in the day Josh come to the city of Moreno Valley in land development. We worked on plans, we worked on several issue, bringing development to the city, and then after that, Josh transferred to Capital Project. I have an honor to work with Josh again on many projects. Like Mayor mentioned before, the recent assignment that Josh completed is the Satellite Library. That's a huge assignment. I'm proud of Josh, because I come to Josh just one day and asked, this is the assignment we have to complete it right away, can you do it? And Josh said, yes. So with that, we're proud to deliver the project on time, on schedule, and the project is under construction right now. So I'm very proud to have Josh with us as a team of the Capital Project Division Manager. Again, I congratulate you for being Employee of the Quarters, Third Quarters of 2017.
Once again, congratulations to Josh Froman for the Employee of the Quarter. Our fourth and final presentation will be the International Economic Development Council Gold Award for Excellence in Economic Development Moreno Valley Business Attraction Website. If Mr. Lee, you can come forward, please.
Well, thank you, Mayor Potem Baca. I am delighted to be here to present this award from the International Economic Development Council to the city of Moreno Valley for the Best Website of 2017. Now, the International Economic Development Council is the premier organization for, in the field of economic development. Members consist of cities, county, state, federal government, universities, colleges, private institutions, as well as corporations. Now, the competition was fierce. This was an international competition, so we were competing against other cities, counties, states, and Moreno Valley, we won the top prize, the gold award. And so I really want to thank the Mayor Potem, the mayor, members of the city council, the Economic Development Subcommittee, for really allowing us this opportunity to develop this fantastic website. As you have probably seen our website, it starts out with the drone photography of different areas of Moreno Valley, and this was actually done in-house by our media team. We also had our GIS team work on two fantastic story maps to really tell the story about Moreno Valley, and all the different attributes and items of things that are necessary for the CEOs of companies, site selectors, as well as real estate professionals to really look at Moreno Valley with this website. So with that, I am, once again, very delighted to be here to present this golden plaque from the International Economic Development Council to the city of Moreno Valley for the Best Website of 2017. Thank you.
On behalf of the city council, the city of Moreno Valley and its residents, we accept this award. Thank you so much, Mr. Lee, Michelle Patterson. We have an excellent team here in Moreno Valley, and to win this award and compete with so many, you know, there's no words to say what it means to us. But thank you so much for your work, and it's very much appreciated. We're gonna get the whole city council down here for the picture. Thank you once again, Economic Development Department, Mike Lee, Michelle Patterson, and everyone else that makes this city so wonderful. That concludes our special presentation. The regular council meeting will reconvene in about 10 minutes.
Good evening, and welcome to the joint meeting of the city council, the city of Moreno Valley, Moreno Valley Community Services District, city successor agency for the community redevelopment, agency of the city of Moreno Valley, Moreno Valley Housing Authority, and the Board of Library Trustees. The city council receives a separate stipend for CSD meetings. I now call this meeting to order on November 7th, 2017, at about 6:14 PM. The pledge of allegiance will be led by Frank Wright. Please remain standing for the invocation, which will be given by Rabbi Suzanne Singer of Temple Beth Fell.
Everyone, please stand. Repeat after me. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Good evening. As we gather here this evening, we call on God for guidance. There is power in assembly, there is power in meeting. We ask for wisdom and discernment. Dear God, give us the wisdom once again to make educated choices, strength to make difficult choices, hearts to make righteous ones. Words spoken in this gathering must be honest and open. In this undertaking, we must be ever mindful to treat one another with respect and dignity. The Hasidic Rabbi Zuschia taught his disciples that they must be the best of themselves. He said, "When I go before God at the end of my life, God will not ask me, 'Why are you not more like Moses?'" And God will ask me, "Why are you not more like Abraham?" God will ask me, "Why were you not more like Zuschia?" Moses did not see the promised land. His task was to lead a slave accustomed band to march toward freedom. Each day, we ourselves must ask, can I do my share? Mindful of the past, building for tomorrow. Not Moses, nor Zuschia, nor any borrowed mask, to be ourselves today. Ours not to end the work nor even start, ours to give each day a willing heart. Grateful for the strength, the wisdom, and the courage which have sustained us. Thankful for the success that has crowned our efforts. May we proceed from task to task confident of purpose, resolute in the pursuit of our commitment, and ennobled by the innate worthiness of our goals. In the Jewish tradition, one must never offer a blessing without immediately following the words with the actions mentioned in the blessing. So as I bless this assembled group this evening, may your actions be suffused with a sense of the greater good, with a sense of responsibility to your entire community, but most notably to those who are the most vulnerable among us, the elderly, the infirm, the widow, the orphan, and the stranger. O guardian of life and liberty, may our city always merit your protection. Teach us to give thanks for what we have by sharing it with those in need. Keep our eyes open to the wonder of creation and alert to the care of the earth. May we never be lazy in the work of our community. May the members of this council govern with justice and compassion. May our homes be safe from affliction and strife, and may our city and country be sound in body and spirit. Amen. Amen.
Thank you Rabbi Suzanne Singer from Temple Beth Fell for those encouraging words. Madam Clerk, roll call, please.
Yes, sir. Councilmember Guyba?
I'm here.
Councilmember Marquez?
Here.
Councilmember Cabrera?
Here.
Mayor Protem Baca?
Here.
Mayor Gutierrez?
Here. Staff introductions, please.
Pat Hockesnades, City Clerk.
Marshall Armin, Chief Financial Officer, City Treasurer.
Martin Kusonowit, City Attorney.
Michelle Dawson, City Manager.
Tom DeSantis, Assistant City Manager.
Mike Lee, Economic Development Director.
Alan Brock, Community Development Director.
Joel Anavero, Chief Police.
Abdol Alamat, Fire Chief.
Kathleen Sanchez, Human Resources Director.
Mel Alonso, Parks and Community Services.
Michael Lloyd, Interim City Engineer.
Thank you. Just a friendly reminder to those that are out in the audience, we do have Spanish translation services. If anyone is interested in this feature, the devices can be checked out in the back of the room, and it's with the gentleman standing in the back, near the clock. Also, we do have agenda items that are being considered to be taken out of order. We actually have two, item E2 and G1. E2, staff is requesting that item E2, Public Hearing for Three National Pollutant Discharge Elimination System Mail Ball, the NPDS, be removed from the agenda at this time and be rescheduled and re-notice to January 2, 2018. And G1, the applicant prologist has requested a continuance of this item to the January 16, 2018 council meeting. So, I would like to request at, up at this time in the agenda, since the public hearing was closed on this item and it was set for council deliberation, in order to grant the continuance, we do need a motion by the council if we would like to do that.
So moved.
Okay, motion by Mayor Protem Baca, second by Councilmember Marquez.
Want to do a voice?
Yeah, just do a voice. Thank you.
Councilmember Guyba?
Yes.
Councilmember Cabrera?
Yes.
Councilmember Marquez?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Baca?
Yes.
Mayor Gutierrez?
Yes. So, items E2, just to clarify, and G1 are now off the agenda. Before we hear public comments this evening, I ask and encourage everyone participating to keep their comments respectful towards each other, especially in the individuals at the podium, whether you agree or disagree with them. Finally, I ask that you keep your comments to three minutes. So, I believe it blinks in red once the 30 seconds is coming. So, make sure you wrap up your comments. Public comments on matters on the agenda, so for specific items, will be taken up as that item is called. Those wishing to speak on any subject not on the agenda may do so at this time. Just go ahead and complete and submit a blue speaker slip for the non-agenda items. In order to preserve the meeting decorum, the council and staff will not respond during public comments. Any council comments or questions to staff will be addressed during the council closing comments. So, Madam Clerk, go ahead and, let's start with the non-agenda items. How many speakers do we have tonight?
I have 10 slips.
Okay, are they for the non-agenda items?
Yes, the items G1, I put as non-agenda items.
Okay, all right, thank you. Okay, we'll go ahead and do, if you can call up the three speakers at a time.
Carolyn Brodeur, Tom Jarrell, Rafael Burguerras.
Hi there, good evening.
Good evening. My comment has to do with Veterans Day. My parents moved here, sorry, in 1980, when my father was stationed at March Air Force Base, and have, they lived here for some 30 years. I would like to pay homage, not just to military veterans, but also, God help me, this is hard, to the spouses. I know I can do this. My mom passed away Sunday, and, sorry, she was, she was buried with my dad at the Riverside National Cemetery. And it's, it's, spouses of the military veterans are the not-sung heroes of the military. We would be hard pressed to find quality people to serve in our military without the support of spouses who choose to embark upon the military life alongside them. As is the case with most, with many military spouses, my mother was basically a single parent during much of my father's military career. My father was a B-52 pilot during the Cold War, so he had to go on alert every other week, prepared to take off at a moment's notice to defend our country in the event of this, that the Soviets launched a nuclear attack, kind of like what's going on with the North Korea, but this was all the time. I grew up with that threat all the time. It was like being a firefighter, except that the B-52 pilots didn't get a week off in between the weeks that they stayed at alert quarters. So, when my dad was on alert, my mom was literally a single parent to five kids. My mom almost died when I was being born, but my dad couldn't be there with her. He was on alert, protecting our country from World War III. During Vietnam, my dad was gone while filing, flying numerous Arc Light missions. My dad, my sister said, "Don't say they were carpet bombing missions," but they were. But anyways, my mom had to care for their five kids while living with the fear of her husband being shot down by one of Jane Fonda's friends. So, you'd have to know a little history to understand that reference. When I was in third grade, my mom had to be a single parent for an entire year, while my dad was TDY to Yutipal, Thailand. There was no extended family nearby to help her, as is often the case with military spouses. My mom couldn't, my mom was the only one who could go to my softball games and gymnastics meets because my dad was working, protecting our country a lot. My mom moved over 15 times during my dad's career. Some people have moved more than that. Anyways, I, the sad thing is I took my mom for granted because she was the one who was always there, and my dad was the one who was gone. But that happens a lot to military spouses. Anyways, so on this Veterans Day, let's please remember the military spouses, as well as veterans. Thank you.
Thank you, Carolyn, for coming to share your story. Thank you. We have Rafael and Tom?
Tom, and then Rafael.
Okay, Tom? Good evening, Tom.
Good evening, Mayor. Thank you. Tom Jarrell, speaking on behalf of myself, Mayor Gutierrez, Mayor Protem Baca, council members, members of staff and the public. Thank you for allowing us to share our thoughts with you. I just want to echo the very beautiful sentiments lady before me shared. I was gonna talk about Veterans Day second, I'll talk about it first, and just remind the public, you know, it's one of the, it's an incredible thing to see does Veterans Day and Memorial Day, their service, and I think this year it's at 9:30 in the morning, as I was told, and they got something special with a certain veteran gonna be there. I don't know if somebody's gonna share that later, but it sounds like a great program and something I really look forward to it. I might be a little bit late because I have a out-of-town function that gets back around quarter to 10 at best, so, but playing to be there and enjoy that. I also want to thank the City for that cinema cultura. I thought that was just outstanding, very, very well done. Kind of felt like old home week when I walked in the reception area with Mr. Lavelle's paintings, Vanguard's done his work three times, different exhibits. I've met the man, a very nice man, very talented man, so very humble for his amount of talent. And that movie Esteban for the opening night was just darling. I mean, it was kind of a Frank Capra type of film, so it was very enjoyable, very enjoyable. So, I just want to thank the City for putting that together, and, you know, I hear they're planning on year two already, so let's press on. It's a good thing, and kudos for getting Edward James Olmos out here. It was a big coup, so, thank you.
Thank you. Rafael, followed by Adrian, Cynthia Silvestre, and Roy Blackard.
Good evening, Mayor, council members, staff.
Good evening.
Residents and our guests. I want to talk about something that happened a couple of weeks ago on October 24, 2017, where the ordinance was passed 3-2, but we couldn't pass the ban. And that was a shame, that we allow people to come into our city and set up shop at will. That shop that was closed on Hemlock or by the postal is now reopened again in another location, okay? That's what happens when we don't enforce our laws and we're strict with them. And the game that was played on October 24th, you gotta watch the video, and you watch what the two council members did, okay? It was sad, but I give kudos to the mayor, because the mayor was making it clear to the residents, like myself, and what he, what the city needed to be done. He specifically asked the city attorney, what is it that he need? He also asked the developer, the director of development, Alan Block, what they needed and how much time they needed. We did not need 12 months. We sure needed seven. Seven months was good, because if you look at the paperwork from last two weeks ago, page 47, it talks about, there was a study session. This was approved November 1st of 2016. November 1st, 2016, that's 12 months. If you could have a town hall meeting or another study session in the last 12 months, shame other ones that were complaining. You should have something, you should have done something about that. You have plenty of time to inform your district. You put my district, David Marquez, in jeopardy by not voting yes. I'm in District 3. When you said yes, and when Guyba yelled out no, you turned and you said no. Every time Guyba said no, you said no. I mean, you, we saw what you two did on October 24th. So, I'm telling the residents of Moreno Valley, look at the video, and you can see how they play their game. They left this city vulnerable. That's a shame. When pride sets in, when pride sets in, no wisdom comes out of it at all. There was an opportunity to do the right thing. Marquez started well by saying yes. Then he turned and he said no. When he heard Guyba out loud yell out no, then he said no. That's the only time he says no, when he follows Guyba. He'll hear him first, then you'll hear him second. It's a shame. Watch it, October 21st, 24th, 2017.
You, next speaker, please. Adrian Casaneda?
Good evening.
Hey, good evening.
To Honorable Mayor Xing Gutierrez and City Council of Moreno Valley, we, the undesigned residents of Moreno Valley of Riverside County, California, respectfully request a skatepark centrally located in city, in the city of Moreno Valley. The youth that enjoy skating do not have a place to go to that is safe and enclosed, proximated to them. The presidential mandate for an increase of physical activity, WRCOG's promotion of healthy behavior for wellness and Moreno Valley's strategic plans, youth programs. Goal is to improve health, wellness, and fitness for Moreno Valley's youth through recreation and sports program, all conceptually support a skatepark.
Okay, thank you. Adrian, and do you have a petition there?
Yeah.
Oh, okay. Can you hand it over to the bailiff, and then the bailiff will give it to our city clerk? Thank you. Thank you so much for coming. Are you Cynthia?
Yeah.
Yes, okay.
Good evening, my name is Cynthia. I attend Valley View High School. Where I come from, there was parks everywhere. We had skateparks, we had people outside. When I moved here, there wasn't...
Want to speak into the microphone real quick?
Oh. Okay. When I came here, all I seen is, I'd never seen anyone not be outside, and then now, like, the electronics are taking over. It's like, we need this park here to, like, to increase how mu, how much more people are out here and get more kids, like, active and be able to do things like skating. Skating is the most, when I went around getting these petition signs, I had so many stories being told to me about, oh, how they love skating, but they had to, like, go 30 minutes to an hour just to go to a skatepark. But if we have one here closer, it's a closer proximity to us, we give our parents less stress because knowing, like, oh, where's my child, like, when are they coming home? Are they safe? But if it's a closer proximity to our house, they, they know where we are, they can, like, a five-minute drive, they can go check, see if their kids are okay. Also, it keeps the kids out of the streets. Like, when you give, when you give a kid what they love doing the most, they, they take it. They, obviously, they're gonna take it for granted because it's the only thing they have, other than being on the street, getting into trouble, doing all that things. And then, some of the kids, we do, they'll be doing tricks on those, on the curbs, and they could, that, that's a chance of getting hit by a car. If we have a skatepark where it's enclosed, there's a less chance of that happening. And also, it's, it's a place to grow. It's, it's a good place to grow, like, you meet new people, you grow with those people, you learn new tricks, you learn everything from, every person you meet, they're gonna know something you don't. And that's, that's what I have to say about the skatepark. Thank you.
Thank you, Cynthia, and you're a great speaker. Thank you so much for your leadership in coming out to the city council meeting. Thank you. Do you have contact information in the petitions of how we can get ahold of you guys? Okay, thank you. Roy?
It's funny how you come up here and you have something prepared to say or to speak on something, and then the speakers just change everything for you. It is fortunate for me that I had Pete, who taught me how to think on my feet. So, as the first lady said, and I couldn't say it any better, we do need to honor our veterans on Veterans Day, and we need to honor them every day. Because, and how I believe we do honor them, is we take what they fought and died and bled for to give us the right to live in the greatest country on God's green earth, that we should, we should embrace that opportunity to pass on the opportunity to everybody else and not stagnate, not stays, not focus on things that are, aren't important, but focus on the things that are important. That is opportunity for our citizens, having a better quality of life. That's what we should, that's what should be the number one focus of U5 on the dais for the City of Moreno Valley, because you represent over 200,000 people. And you have effect on their daily lives, one way or the other. And hopefully, in the future, it will be a positive effect. Because the people of Moreno Valley deserve nothing less. We've got to work every day, and we got to keep that goal in mind. Because if we don't, we're gonna continue to backslide, and I don't want to see that in my city, because I'm one of the few people that can call this my native area. And it troubles me to see the youth of this area that don't have the opportunities that I had. I had plenty of opportunities when I was growing up in this town. We never lacked something to do. There was never, there was never that kind of restriction put on us when I grew up here. And it's sad to see, time and time again, that come up here and that be a reoccurring theme here and at our schools and a lot of venues. We need to rebrand, refocus, and retool everything that we're doing, and we need to do it on a united front. The bickering, the, the, what I'm gonna call it, the backstabbing, all of that has got to stop, all across the board. I don't know how else to say it. I think everybody else said it, I think Rafael said it. We want, we, not what we want, we expect and we need you to be working for all of us to do the right thing and to do what's best for everyone. Because that's what we, you know, that's the only way we're gonna dig us up out of this hole that we've made for 30-plus years in this city.
Thank you, Roy. Next speaker is Josh, and then we have Sean, and then Omar. Is Josh here? We can have Sean?
Good evening, Mayor, and, uh, city council members. My name's Sean Hartraff. I'm a business representative for the Southwest Regional Council of Carpenters. In particularly, I represent out of Local 944, the carpenters of the Inland Empire, San Bernardino and Riverside County. I just wanted to come here tonight, the last time the, the prologist item was on your, was before you guys, you guys took a stand for the community, and you asked prologists to meet with all the stakeholders, including ourselves. I just came tonight to give you an update of how that went and how it's going. The status of our conversations with prologists, we have, we did meet with them, and we've presented them with a proposal, and we are eager, eagerly awaiting... we did meet with them and, and we've presented them with a proposal and we are eager, eagerly awaiting, uh, response from them as of today. So, we, we as an organization, we want the best for the people of Moreno Valley and the workers of Moreno Valley. And we expect and we, we see a real pathway here and we hope that Moreno, or that Prologis is a, is an organization of their word and keeps true to, uh, improves to be a good community partner. So once again, I want to thank each and every one of you for meeting with us tonight and in the past and, uh, we look forward to, uh, seeing you again. Thank you.
Thank you, Sean. The next speaker is Omar Kobian?
Good evening, everybody.
Good evening.
My name is Omar Kobian and I want to start with saying, uh, this is also in regards to Prologis. Um, I've been a carpenter for twenty years. I've lived in Moreno Valley for twenty-five years. You wouldn't believe, but I've never had a job in Moreno Valley. I've always had to drive to either Orange County or LA. I think the importance of having a job in Moreno Valley is great. I, I come here with my brother-in-law, which is a carpenter. My good friend, Irad Ruiz, which is also a carpenter. You know, his father was Romelio Ruiz, the, the man that you guys named the street after. We all have to drive far to work here. You don't realize the importance of having a project like Prologic, what it would mean to us ha- being able to come home at four o'clock, take our kids to baseball practice as opposed to getting home at seven every day, not being able to spend time with our wives and kids. It's really important that work stays strong for a living, good living wage in Moreno Valley. Um, I appreciate your time. Thank you.
Thank you, Omar. Thank you for coming. Next speaker is Louise. Is that the last speaker?
Yes, sir.
Luis Palomares, community activist. Wow. These kids were collecting signatures, over a thousand, over a thousand. That's a lot and they're still going, but that's to make the point. Okay, as far as the film festival, it was great. I went. I went to the arts part of it too. It was great. Thank you so much, Councilman Cabrera, for that, bringing that. And also to the day of the dead. That was great too, but I was freezing. I couldn't hang out there. It was too cold. I thought it was gonna be, a lot of it was gonna be indoors. But it was great. I thank you for bringing these great, uh, venues to our community here. Really, there was a lot, a lot of people and good food and everything else. It was nice. Okay, as far as the veterans, well, you know, the lady was up here speaking and it really touched my heart. You know, because I had a lot of people, I, in fact, I got a nephew that's coming home. Thank God, he's in the Navy, so he's already ready to get out. Because I'm worried, I'm worried about our, our, our veterans. I'm worried about our, uh, military, cause there's so much, you know, that's coming down right now. You know, the North Korea thing, it's, we might be in World One, World War Three. And I was telling Bob yesterday, you know, the president's over there in, in, uh, out there in that, well, you know what I'm talking about. I'm just a little emotional because of what the last lady was saying. Anyway, I was talking to my husband yesterday and I said, it's, it's pretty ironic. Your uncles were in Korea. And these are the uncles of my, your grandsons, their great, you know, the great, great grand, uh, great-great nephews. They might be over there fighting that war because it looks like that's what's gonna happen. And I pray and I hope for our nation that don't happen because it's gonna be our sons and our daughters and our grandkids and our nephews and our nieces that are gonna go fight that war. And it's a sad thing. War's an ugly thing, you know? Had a brother-in-law that was in Vietnam for eight years. He was a Marine, then he was in the Army. First in the Army, then in the Marines. And he couldn't even talk about it. Until the day he died, he couldn't really talk about it. It was so hard, the atrocities that went on over there. So I just hope that we don't end up, you know, back in a war because we're still over here in the Middle East. And then, you know, Russia and who knows what's gonna happen. You know, it's gonna affect the whole region. So we really gotta pray and hope hard that that don't happen. And as far as, um, wow, the thing about the cannabis, wow. Now what are we gonna do? Look where we're at. There's no ban, there's no nothing now. So, God help us on that one too. I hope something's gonna come quick over the horizons to fix it all up. And just like, um, Raphael was saying, wow. You know, Marcus, think for yourself. I could have some respect for a man that thinks for themselves. It'd be great. But you always look to Mr. Guyva to, you know, get your answers and that, and that's not a good thing. Make up your own mind, you know? Search your heart. Do what's right for the community. And look what, now we don't got a ban. Now what we gonna do?
Okay, next, um, okay, no more speakers?
No more speakers.
All right, we're gonna go to, would any council members like to make their reports and comments at this time instead of closing? Okay, seeing that there's none. Uh, we are now going to move to our joint consent calendar sections A through D on the agenda. All items listed under the consent calendar sections A, B, C, and D are considered to be routine and non-controversial and may be enacted by one motion unless a member of the city council, community services district, city successor agency, um, board of library trustees, uh, would like that item removed for separate action. The motion to adopt the consent calendar is deemed to be a separate motion by each agency and shall be so recorded by the city clerk. Items withdrawn for report or discussion will be heard after public comments, after public hearing items. So, um, let me see here, we have, hey, Councilmember Guyba?
Yeah, thank you. I'd like to pull A fifteen and A sixteen for separate votes.
Okay, A fifteen and A sixteen? And anyone else? Okay, we have Councilwoman Marquez.
Yeah, Mayor, I'd like to pull A seven, um, just for some questions and answers.
Okay, so we'll go ahead and start with A seven if you want to go ahead and ask, uh, your questions to the city manager or any of the staff. Uh, Councilwoman Marquez?
Yeah, thank you, Mayor. This isn't, this isn't pertaining to the, um, contract agreement services with the Riverside County Sheriff's Department and the city of Moreno Valley. At our, um, Public Sub-Safety Committee, um, Mayor Potem and I, uh, attended. We, we listened to, um, our, our chief on the proposals and basically they're just saying, nothing's really changed. Um, but there was some things in here that had been brought to my attention from a couple of, uh, residents. Um, and I just wanted to go over it with you, with the city. This contract will continue through the year of, um, twenty, and you, you can step in, Tom, at, at any time to help me out here. This contract will continue through the year of, um, twenty-twenty-two. But it can always be changed from a vote from the council. So it's not really in stone. Is that correct, Tom?
Uh, Mayor, Mayor Potem, members of the council, Councilwoman Marquez, that is correct.
The, um, the agreement provides law, law enforcement, full range law enforcement services, investigations, special enforcement teams, which include the gang suppression teams, narcotics teams, enforcement, burglary, robbery, suspend, uh, suppression teams. Um, and this goes on to housing, and, and it's not only police work, I mean, street work, it's also housing fraud investigations, um, section eights and stuff like that, um, and traffic. The specialized, um, agreements, they also include motorcycles, K-nines, crime prevention, graffiti prevention and community service officers. So it, it includes the whole, the whole package for the city. We are currently looking at a, uh, increase for the twenty seventeen, twenty-eighteen of approximately eight to ten percent. We don't know until the county supervisors some, some, basically give us the, the, um, the final amount of, of the contract. And, and that's because of, of increases through negotiations with their unions. So it's, it's not in stone also. So you could see a, an increase in, in, um, in, um, in, in the budget. The, um, the, the thing that's new to this contract and, um, myself, Councilman Cabrera and staff, met with the sheriff recently. And I did ask him for, for two separate things, for his approval. And, um, he did grant us the two. One is now the city is going to be active in selecting a new police chief. I understand it was in, 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 in the agreement before, but it was never really enforced. But now I think that we're gonna be involved in, in, during the negotiations and, 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 uh, choosing our new police chief, which is, is really nice. Secondly, we're looking at a poli- police reserve program. The sheriff has given us the, the, um, his blessing in starting to recruit a new, um, sheriff reserve program for the city of Moreno Valley. With that, we'll wait till after the, the new chief is, is seated, is seated. And that's when we can work on that. Gives us more, um, police officers, part-time police officers as they look at it. And will help us with our, um, police, um, shortage here in the city. Also in the contract we're looking at is the, um, and I want to give you some numbers on what we have as compare, I mean, we're comparing this to vehicles, motorcycles. Lot of people ask, do we own the police cars? No, we don't. The police cars are owned by the county. They're supplied to us through our contract services. So we do not own the police cars, just like we don't own the bodies out there. We own everything else. And that includes the motorcycles and any special support vehicles. So if we want to increase our motorcycle, uh, unit, the city has to provide motorcycles for those new officers. If we're gonna add more policemen, the county provides police cars if needed. Just wanted to bring that. Employment. Not one individual, not one individual that worked for the county sheriff is in any way associated with the city of Moreno Valley, meaning employment-wise. We are not liable for them. That is the county. Any type of insurance, workman's comp, goes through the county. We do not provide that for the city. That's part of our contract. So I just want to make that clear. It's a bit like, yeah, and it's been brought to me that, that, uh, you know, do we pay these, these police officers when they get hurt on the job? No, we don't. Uh, we also don't, um, the pensions, we don't, um, we don't supply them with pensions. That comes from the county also. Built training officers. I talked to the chief on this. People say, well, why are we paying for new policemen when they go through the academy? It's not going through the academy. It's the officers, when we add additional policemen to the city and if they come out of the jails, we have to train them to work in the city of Moreno Valley. And there's a cost behind that. We, as a city, provides that funding for that new police, police officer to be trained. So the county doesn't pay for it. That's extra to us. Uh, I'm not gonna break down what we have right now, but I, I want to give you the numbers, the final numbers on what we have in, in the field. As of today, including the chief, lieutenants, sergeants, all sworn officers, police, police department, we have one hundred and fifty sworn officers. One hundred and fifty. Classified, which are not sworn officers, that don't carry a gun, anything like that, don't do police work, only administrate. Forty-four and a half bodies. So people say, well, we don't have enough policemen. We might not have enough policemen, but you know, look at a hundred and fifty sworn officers for all these special, um, departments. It's, it's a lot. It's a lot. We could use more and like it says, with the, the reserve organization, that would help us in our, and not only in our patrol, but other investigations around their departments. Thank you, Mayor.
Okay, we have, um, seeing there's no more council questions, we'll go to public comments on the consent items. Madam Clerk?
I only have some for A fifteen.
Okay, so I'll go ahead and, uh, make a motion, uh, excluding the items that were separate, uh, A fifteen and A sixteen. Exclu- excluding those, entertain a motion. Okay, uh, motion by Mayor Potembaka, second by Cabrera? Okay, and it's approved five-zero. We'll go to item A fifteen, which is F. And let me go to, one second here. Okay, report as city attorney?
Thank you. Honorable Mayor, Mayor Potem, council members, uh, again, I apologize for my voice. Um, but a little bit under the weather. Um, this item is before you as a follow-up to the action that was taken by the council at the last meeting. At that meeting, you introduced and conducted a first reading of an ordinance which, uh, when adopted, uh, will install the permitting regulations uh, for commercial cannabis activity in the city. Uh, the item is before you today, uh, for a second reading by title only, uh, and an action, uh, to adopt the ordinance. The ordinance will become effective thirty days after the adoption. As discussed in the prior, um, meeting, the second prong of, uh, cannabis regulations will be the land use. And that will come before you, uh, in due time from the planning department. With that, I'll open to, uh, answer any questions.
Okay, uh, Councilmember Guyba, you have any questions?
Uh, I, we had a resident had some questions about the lea- about believing it illegal and, and I think if you could amplify that a little bit so they understand, um, how this, the lack of the other ordinance fits in. The fact that just because we didn't pass the ordinance to outlaw it, doesn't mean it's not outlawed. Yeah, I think you understand what I'm saying.
The, neither the medical nor commercial cannabis activity is legal in Moreno Valley at this point in time. Uh, the urgency ordinance expired by its own term. Uh, the prior ordinance, uh, which was in effect and continues to be in effect is part of our municipal code, bans any medical, commercial activity of marijuana in, um, in Moreno Valley. State law precludes, uh, any adult use or recreational use of marijuana until January first or such a time as state becomes licensing, either temporarily otherwise, such activities. So, uh, as of right now, neither medical nor recreational or adult use marijuana is allowed, uh, in the city of Moreno Valley.
Thank you.
We'll go to, um, public speakers?
Rafael Gutierrez, Tom Jorrell, Roy Blackard and Robert Palomares.
Good evening, Mayor, council members, staff, residents and our guests. Here's an opportunity to make the wrong the right. This should be simple to get a five-zero vote on A fifteen. I'm glad that, um, Mayor, I mean, Mayor, um, Councilmember Guyba asked the attorney to clear that, um, the, the banning of, um, marijuana and, um, medical marijuana. I'm not against people that need help. I'm not against those that need an alternative. It's better than shooting heroin, taking pills or drinking themselves to death to relieve their pain. For those that smoked marijuana in the past, when they were younger, found it smoothing. But what happens with that, we get carried away. I know. And I thank God for my mother, who threw it out the window and did not tolerate it in her house. I had to leave if I wanted my own things. But my mother helped me to cut, to kick a habit. So I'm grateful for her. And every mother that helps their son and daughter or their grandchild to kick a habit because it can become a habit when we make something recreational. Because that means you, you have the privilege of getting more and more and more. And this is why it's very, very important to have our rules in place. So when this comes about in our city, we be able to protect our youngest and our seniors who are vulnerable because they are vulnerable. who are vulnerable, because they are vulnerable, just like it was mentioned when the armed guards walked around the bank, they made them nervous. So we don't want a mishap to happen in our city or, or in our future. So I'm hoping that A-15 gets passed, and, um, we will continue to, um, regulate and have ordinance to, um, get permission to, um, get some of these entrepreneurs to follow their rules, because again, if we go around the city, and I've been around the city, we have these dark painted windows that you cannot see inside, but when the doors creep open, you can see what's inside. And that's a shame that we have these windows like that in our city.
Thank you, Rafael. Next speaker is Tom, followed by Roy. And, uh, city clerk, can we put the time up, please? Thank you.
Tom Jorrell, again, just began to bad myself and a bit for the Sundance Center where I spent some time. Uh, Mayor Gutierrez, Mayor Potembaka, councilmembers, and members of the staff and the public, again, thank you for allowing us this time to pitch in here. Uh, first off, I'd like to say the, uh, city attorney did a yeoman's job plus putting that ordinance together. I was very, very impressed with it. I dealt with, I've been in building and development, dealt with contracts and some litigious matters and stuff, and it was a very, very good job in a apparently very short time, so, uh, kudos to the city attorney and his staff, because it was, uh, no small undertaking. I, you know, affirm his good work. I will say, I very much wish we had had the, uh, at least a six-month ban we need every day we can to take a good hard look at. You know, this is a very much a double-edged sword. I know there's the money side, you're going to get some tax money and so on and so forth, but there are social issues and, uh, and for the record, I, uh, I'm continuing to self-educate on this, but it does do, uh, you know, particularly the modern products, uh, the potential impact, um, you know, brain damage to people under 25, so it's not anything to be, you know, lightly, uh, considered. So I hope you keep that in mind. Uh, I do have a question. I don't know if it's in the ordinance or not, but what conditions and/or penalties might be in place for those who have been operating, uh, you know, openly, without a permit, business license, a C of O, paying any tax revenues? Just in the last 24 hours, I had direct contact with a party who said he's been operating, um, quite happily for two years, does an average of $5,000 a day. Do the math. The guy's made some serious money. Um, how much trickled that city hall here? So, you know, I, and I think it's a slap in the face to all those little businesses out there, went and got their permits and their business licenses and their C of Os and their inspections and went through all the troubles, uh, you know, getting, you know, being a legally compliant business. Michael Medved, who I got a lot of respect for on, uh, recently on his radio, said, and I'm certain, and for he was quite the hippie back in the day in the 60s, he was a big-time hippie, you know, and for he did a few joints in his days. He said that he voluntarily abstained from, uh, you know, further use of marijuana, as he noted that his friends were getting stupider and stupider as he watched them. And these were college people. So, uh, you know, it's not something that's going to, uh, enhance your brain power. And, uh, so my concerns remain for the young people and any potential damage. So that's where my concerns are. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker is Roy, followed by Robert.
This is another issue, again, it sat for a year and nothing got done. Now we're under the gun. We should be, you know, the, we should have an ordinance in place as of yesterday. It's becoming illegal on January 1st, 2018. We need to deal with this issue honestly. It's in our city. It's in our city right now. You drive up and down the roads, you see all the nice little green crosses, and everybody kind of turns a blind eye or this or that. Let's put the regulations in and put the opportunities in where we can to take advantage of this. Like I said, work on the commercial cultivation. That's where the real, I believe, opportunity is, to put real jobs, real, the best benefits you can get in this industry. It's the growth industry of the next few decades. We should, for once, take advantage of what's coming down the pipe. It's real simple. Get it done. Get it done the best way we can, and look especially on the commercial cultivation. Make it where it is, people look to Moreno Valley to come here to provide the opportunities and the jobs for our citizens. And then give the, give the public safety personnel the dollars to clean it out of our schools. We have a young man here, Mr. Cabrera, who was recently in our schools, and he can tell you, just as I could tell you from the 60s, it was in there then, it's in there now, and it will continue to be there now unless we put, unless we put a, a, the policies in place that's going to clean it out of our schools and, and get it to where it's intended with the law for people 21 and over to buy. I don't know how much more succinctly or simply I can put it, but we need to get, you know, move on it. Let's get it done. Let's get the businesses in here that want to come in here to provide that service. I think it was last time, 64% of the people in Moreno Valley voted for Prop 64. That's, that tells you where the community stands. It might not be where you stand personally, but you represent this commu- community. And I think the community has spoken loud and clear. So let's get the job done. Let's get it done tonight. Let's put staff, get, give staff the direction, and let's start working where we can finally capitalize on the opportunities that are out there in the future for everyone.
Okay. Robert?
Good evening, Mayor, Mayor Potem, councilmembers. Uh, yeah, we just need to adopt this ordinance. You know, uh, Gaiba seems to have been playing politics the last council meeting when he voted not to have the ban, and then Marcus jumps on it, you know? You know, you need to get with it, with the rest of the council, and, you know, get engaged. Follow him, ask questions, you know, but y- y- you seem to be campaigning or politicking all the time. You know, you talk real good, you know how to clean it up, and then you flip-flop at the end. You know, Gaiba, you got to get real. Yeah, I, I think this is already going to be your second year, and from what I've seen, you have been accomplished very much. And then you're a bad influence for Marcus. He don't need no help. He can screw up on his own. You know, he talks about, you know, wow, we need to have a meeting, we need about, to have some discussions with the committee. When they were repairing the street on Furby where he lives, they're already getting into it, he didn't even know about it. And that's his district. He lives a few blocks from there. So he needs to get real. You got to work together, because all you're doing is just taking up space if you don't. So we need to adopt this ordinance. You know, City of Paris, I was watching their council meeting, they've already designated, I don't know how many acres, but they're all going to be indoors for cultivation. They're going to look just like logistic buildings. So they're already on the move. I know Gaiba was concerned about, let's wait and see what all the cities are going to do. That's a problem. We always wait, and we, and everybody's building around us, and we're just standing here looking. Uh, you look at all the logistics around us, in every city, Fontana, everybody, Redlands, Riverside, Paris, I mean, wake up! Thank you.
Thank you. Any more speakers? Madam Clerk? Okay, we'll move, uh, to council deliberation. Please, uh, press your button if you'd like to speak. Okay, Councilmember Marquez?
Thank you, Mayor. I basically call my own, my own shots up here. I don't follow anybody's lead. So for those, um, in the audience that believe that I follow someone else, um, you're very mistaken. I've lived here for many, many years, and if I would have listened to people like a couple of the speakers, I probably wouldn't be alive today, so, um, I do my own thing up here. Secondly, on this, um, marijuana issue, for us old folks, yeah, we, we experienced with it. We, we smoked it. Uh, I'm not ashamed of it. If you were in a war zone, you would definitely know why we smoked it. You had to to survive out there. You'd gone crazy. So I have nothing against the, the, um, the product. But this day and age, we have high school kids, even el- elementary kids, smoking it, and that's what I'm against. If you open it up to the city, and yes, open it up to dispensaries that are legally to sell them, it's going to get down to these kids, and we have no control over it, because we can't close down dispensaries if they have a permit. They're going to definitely, uh, get it one way or the other. If it's illegal, we can close down dispensaries. Harder to get, the kids might not be able to purchase it, possess it in any way. I'm not against all marijuana dispensaries. I think it's very, very, medical-wise, it should be used for what they say it's used for. But just to have it for recreational, you know, you know, a lot of people say, you know, you're an, you're an old guy, you don't smoke it, you don't care anymore. Well, I do care. I've got grandchildren coming through the schools. I wouldn't want them to be around it at all. It's not a city problem if it gets into the schools. I believe it's, it's a school problem. We can't go on school property and enforce it. We might be able to talk about it at city council meetings, but there's no way, there's no way we're allowed to go on school pro- on premises to enforce it. That would be the school's responsibility, not the city's. All these other cities that are permitting it to be grown and sold in their cities, and I see, you know, it's, it's good revenue for the city, and if it's controlled by the right way, sold properly with license, yes, the city's going to get their share. I, there's other ways to, to make some revenue in the city. Uh, we have the, um, hotel tax, TLT taxes coming in. That's going to help us quite a bit with our police, public safety, um, four other things too on the city. The last count we had was three major hotels coming to the city, plus what we have now, and we're going to get a lot more. So, uh, that tax revenue is going to come in. Tonight, people want us to approve of this. Yes, 64% of our residents voted for it. 64%. I can't take that away from, from them. They had their say-so, and we represent them. We represent them, so, at this point in time, I have no other choice but to go along with the majority of this council and say, if this is what they want, we'll give it to them. Thank you.
Do you have any other comments? Okay, I'll go ahead and close it and entertain a motion.
So moved.
Okay, motion by, uh, Mayor Potembaka, second by Cabrera. And it's approved, uh, four yes, one no. We're going to move to, uh, A-16, which is now F, and that's, uh, mayoral appointments. Report of city clerk, I believe.
Excuse me, Mayor, just a minute.
Yes.
Pat, nothing's coming up on mine at all, no matter what I go to. I, I just stay on the closed session.
Is that happening to you too? Yeah, it's happened to me too. So I think it's just a technical glitch.
But it's important for this because you have the redacted one that I needed to point to.
Yeah.
Oh, I think it's, yeah.
Something that was logged in improperly. So...
The packet is really big.
Oh, is that what it is? Because of the prologis, it kind of messed, messed it up, because...
Yeah, just pull the, uh, just the A applicant, the, um, utility commission one.
Okay.
I would, I would like to have seen so I don't, I picked the right place. Have it? Yeah, I have it on my iPad.
Uh, Madam Clerk? It looks like, unless you already have a copy.
Yeah, I have a, the, the copy that was in the, they had it printed out. Thank you.
Okay, report a city clerk.
This item is coming to you just for ratification. The mayor would like ratification of Elisa Lisa Wright to the Utilities Commission, and also Portia Burleson for the Arts Commission.
And, uh, we have, okay, we'll go ahead and move on to council questions of staff. Councilmember Gaiba?
So we have these membership application forms, am I correct, that they fill out?
Yes, sir.
And they're supposed to be honest on them, and they're supposed to put on the proper information to make them qualified to actually be appointed? Am I correct? So those are rules for doing this?
Yes, sir.
Okay, well, then I'll wait till my deliberations and bring my point up.
Okay. Any other council questions? Okay, uh, we'll go ahead and go to public comments. Any public comments on this?
None.
Okay. We'll go to council deliberation. Any council member would like to deliberate? Okay, Councilmember Gaiba?
Thank you. I have nothing against this applicant in any way, shape, or form, but this applicant is not qualified to be appointed at this time. On the backside of the application, it says attendance of at least one meeting is required prior to the appointment dates of the meetings attended, and there's nothing on the application. So until that person actually attends the meetings and becomes qualified, I don't think they should be being appointed. So for that case, I would vote against that one. So once they go to a meeting and do their due diligence and appropriate, then we can bring them back up to be appointed.
Okay. Any other deliberation? Councilmember Cabrera?
I do just want to comment on the Arts Commission appointment, uh, Portia Burleson. I want to mention that she actually was in charge of the Art Walks, uh, Art Walk part of the Latin Film Festival that several speakers have talked about tonight. So I just wanted to let everybody know about that. Um, she also has a studio over off of Alessandro Boulevard. Uh, if you haven't visited that, I would recommend you do, and, um, and that's, that's about it.
Okay. Any more deliberation? I'll entertain a motion by council to approve the slate of both items as one motion.
So moved.
By Mayor Potembaka. Second by Councilmember Cabrera. Please vote.
Follow our own rules.
It's approved 3-2. And we'll move on to now public hearings. Uh, if we have a Portia or Elisa Wright, i- if they could please stand to be recognized if they're not here, or they're here. She's not here, no. Okay, I don't see her either. Okay. All right, we'll move on to, um, public hearings. E1, which is a resolution of setting the amount of the Quimby and Lou fees. Uh, report of Parks and Community Services.
Mayor and council, the item that you have in front of you is a resolution setting the amount of the Quimby and Lou fees. The Moreno Valley General Plan specifies a parkland standard of three acres per 1,000 of population, which is a minimum allowed by the Quimby Act for residential subdivisions. As new residential development occurs within the city, it is essential to maintain not only this current parkland level, but also the minimum standard required by the Quimby Act in order to provide adequate parks along with recreational, recreational opportunities for the community. To maintain the parkland acreage standard, new residential developments may either dedicate improved parkland to mitigate their impact to existing parks, or they may pay a Quimby in Lou fee to provide funding for future parks and park improvements. The city contracted with Willdan Financial Services to perform a fee study to review and develop the appropriate fee level for the Quimby in Lou fee. Some of the factors that were analyzed in the study included population growth, land use types, average occupancy densities, existing parks, and recreation facilities. This report recommends updating the fees based on current land and improved values for parks, which represents a 5.2% increase for single-family homes and reductions in fee for multifamily and senior housing projects from the last update in fiscal year 2008, 2009. This concludes... This concludes my report, and I'm available for any questions.
Thank you, Mel, for the report. We'll go ahead and entertain any council questions of staff. Okay, Councilmember Cabrera? All right. Oh, Councilmember Marquez.
Yeah, thank you. Mel, we're way overdue on this, aren't we?
Yes, sir. Our Zone 8 fees have increased since the city was incorporated. So we're essentially still operating on a budget from 20 years ago.
Twenty years ago.
Yes, sir.
So I want the residents to know that we're not doing this because, because we want We have to be competitive. And the only way you can be competitive is by doing what we're doing. We want nice parks, we want, a lot of things we want. And we have to increase these rates. There's no way around it. If you want to stay in the Stone Ages, then we just don't bring this forward and approve of it. So I want the residents to understand that we're approving today to raise the fees is because we need to, for your benefit. Way overdue, 20 years. That's all I wanted to say.
Thank you. I'm going to go ahead and open the hearing. Any public testimony, Madam clerk?
None.
Okay, I'm going to close the hearing. And at this time, if you would like to deliberate, please press your request to speak button. Seeing there's none, entertain a motion by council to approve Staff's recommendation number two.
Make a motion.
Okay, motion by Councilmember Marquez, second by Cabrera. Item passes 5-0. We go on to item G2, since G1 was continued to January on request of the applicant. Introduce an ordinance amending section 12.20.020 of chapter 12.20 of the City of Moreno Valley Municipal Code. Basically, this is for the speed limit, so I'll have the Public Works Director report on this.
Good evening, mayor. Mayor Potem and council. Eric Lewis, our city traffic engineer, will make a brief presentation. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you for that introduction. And the item for you this evening is an ordinance that will amend section 12.20.02 of the city's municipal code and declare prima facie, excuse me, speed limits on 74 roadway segments located throughout the city. Primae facie speed limits are, at first appearance, considered reasonable and prudent under normal driving conditions with no other overriding circumstances. So in accordance with the California Vehicle Code, a speed zone enforced with radar or other similar electronic measuring devices must be justified by an engineering and traffic survey every five years. This requirement may be extended to seven years with specialized police training and speed measurement equipment calibration. This timeframe can be further extended to 10 years when the previous criteria are met and a registered engineer documents that no significant changes in the roadway characteristics or adjacent land use have occurred. To perform an engineering and traffic survey, data is collected including vehicle volumes, prevailing speeds, and collision history. Segments are field assessed for current roadway conditions, excuse me, from the spot speed survey. Excuse me. The 85th percentile speed or critical speed is determined. The critical speed is the major element in determining reasonable speed limits. And speed limits are generally set at or near the critical speed unless unusual conditions not readily apparent to the motorist are determined. Conditions not readily apparent to the motorist may include collision history, design speed, sight distance constraints, pedestrian and bicycle safety. And enforceable speed zones are an integral component to improve roadway safety. For the 74 speed zones being considered, the recommendation is that 33 remain the same, nine new zones be created, four should increase, and 28 to be reduced. This item was brought before the Traffic Safety Commission at their regular meeting on November 1st. The TSC reviewed and approved the speed zones and recommended them to the city council for consideration. So this concludes my report on this item, and the consultant who performed the work, as well as staff, are available for any questions you may have.
Thank you. Just a quick question. We do this once a year?
We...
When it's needed, or...
Well, we try to do it on an annual cycle because we have so many, so we try to rotate them. So we stay within the compliance of the CVC and not overwhelm staff with the numerous amount of speed zones. So it's probably on a three- or four-year rotation, but annually is ideal.
Okay, thank you. Councilmember Marquez.
Good afternoon, Eric, or good evening. Eric, on this speed on the residential streets, what, how's it determined again? The speed limits on residential streets, is that a state, or how do you determine that again?
Well, on a typical residential street, the vehicle code allows the speed limit to be set at 25 miles an hour as a prima facie with no other, no other studies required. So it's by default 25 miles per hour per the vehicle code.
But you have resident streets that have a 40-mile speed limit. It's because of the winding of the streets and the traffic on that street that increases that speed limit?
Well, as a roadway is classified, goes up higher in classification, in other words, it carries more volumes, it might be a bus route, it has more lanes than just two, then the speed limit can go up. And some of those cases, residentially fronting homes do occur on those streets. So just because it's residentially fronted doesn't make it a residential street.
Okay. So we have a resident complains about speeders on the street. We're safe to say that because of the California Vehicle Code, this is what it's set for and why it's set at that speed?
That would be correct. To be enforceable through the use of radar or other electronic devices, the engineering traffic survey has to be prepared, and the critical speed is that major element that helps us set that speed limit.
Okay. Next question is, and I don't know if you can answer it, consultant or the chief. In the old days, it used to be radar. There used to be a lot of myths about how radar can interfere with certain things, and you couldn't get an accurate speed of that vehicle. And then they changed over to laser. Do we use that laser in the city now? No more radar?
The modern radar gun, if you will, is a LiDAR gun, which is laser radar, and that's what we use.
Okay, and it's more accurate, you can get vehicles in between each other now?
Pinpoints to specific vehicle.
Okay. And during the survey, was that used for these streets to set these speed limits?
Typically, typically the consultant would use a radar gun, and they're certified to perform radar tests and produce that spot speed survey data.
Okay, okay, that's all right. Thank you.
Councilmember Cabrera.
Thank you, Eric. I just wanted to ask about the section over there, La Salle, you know, leading into Paris in front of Rancho Verde. Are any speed limits changing on that street?
Yes, that speed limit is recommended to go from 50 miles an hour down to 45.
Okay, Madam clerk, any public comments?
Yes, Tom Girrell.
Is that the only one?
Tom Girrell, again, speaking of I have myself, Mayor Gutierrez, Mayor Potembaka, council members, members of staff and the public. Reason I put a slip in, and it may be a bit off-topic, but it definitely relates, I'm a big advocate of public safety for a long time. You know, my hot rod driving went away very early in my years. I became quite a putt-putt driver, not that I'm any better than anybody else, I probably hold up traffic. But one of the things I'm concerned by, I used to see it when I, now that I'm driving again, I'm seeing it throughout the city, the amount of donuts that you see, those where the kids, you know, do the burnouts in circular fashion. I'm shocked at some of the places I see them. Everywhere, residential, major arterials, I mean, it's all over town. And I do know some of them run, I would assume, visual where city cameras can see them. So maybe we could at least get a comment from the chief, and if this, it's probably not directly under this, it's just a speed limit issue. However, you know, it's just something we can get to the council and, you know, have a crackdown on it because I, you know, I'm concerned about it. I'm surprised somebody has, maybe somebody has been injured severely already. But, you know, one of the things it does, it sets a bad precedent because the kids that want to do this, and even the adults, they come into town, they say, oh, the town's wide open. And, you know, and I have seen it done in broad daylight in pretty busy streets, so concerns me. So that's my question. Thank you.
Thank you. We'll go ahead and go to deliberation, council deliberation on this topic. Seeing that there's none, I entertain a motion.
Second.
Marquez made a motion, followed by a second from Baca. Okay, and then we'll go on to G3. But before we go to G3, we're going to take a five-minute break, and then we'll come Welcome back. We're back to G3, which is approval of the operating and capital carryovers from fiscal year 2016, 2017, and the first quarter budget amendments. We'll have report of financial and management services. Marshall?
Good evening, Honorable Mayor, Mayor Potem, city council members. The report this evening requests the approval of the carryovers of certain fiscal year 16, 17 revenues and expenditure appropriations, requests certain position control roster changes, and proposes some fiscal year 17, 18, 18, 19 revenue and expenditure budget amendments. With regard to the carryover adjustments, at the end of fiscal year 16, 17, which ended last June 30th, all unexpended appropriations lapse and revert to fund balance. Once the fiscal year end, closing process has identified the items that need to be carried over. Essentially, these are items related to contracts that weren't fully expended, along with certain projects. We come back to the council and request a carryover of those so that we can continue spending on those items. Many of these are related to CIP projects that are in process. A big component on one piece related to the general fund is for the vehicle replacement program that's in process, where we have vehicles on order, but we haven't paid for those vehicles. So we carry over the expenditures to allow us to complete that purchase in the second year. With regards to the city position control summary, throughout the year, we always look at positions to see how we can best utilize them, true up those activities with what's required out of those certain positions. There are four positions we're looking at in this item. The first one is to reclassify the lead animal care technician position into an animal services division, oh, excuse me, in the animal services division to an animal care technician supervisor. This will bring the position title in line with the duties currently performed by this position. The impact to the general fund will be approximately $4,400 annually. The second is updating the salary grade for the animal services license inspector. This will bring the position in line with the duties, again, currently performed. It allows a higher capacity of function. There's no impact to this budget, but it will allow basically a future step increase in the future. The third item is re-titling the media and production division manager to the media and communications division manager. Again, to bring this in line with the duties of that position, this is no impact to the budget. And the last item is to retitle the Parks and Community Services Division Manager to the Parks and Community Services Deputy Director. There's no fiscal impact proposed, but this will provide additional capacity to that job description. With regards to the proposed budget amendments, based on economic activity and the revenue collections through September 2017, staff is not anticipating that total revenues will produce any significant increases over the amounts originally budgeted at this time. There are some minor adjustments, and the increases for 17, 18 general fund revenues, we propose an increase of about $80,000 to approximately 100.9 million for the general fund. With regards to the expenditures for the general fund, we're looking at a decrease of approximately $30,000. This will bring the general fund expenditures down to 100.7 million. The fund continues to be structurally balanced without the use of fund balance, and all of the detail for these adjustments are summarized in Exhibit C to the resolution of the staff report. With regards to other funds outside of the general fund, some of the major changes relate to our special districts funds. Once they've submitted the tax roll to the county, we propose truing up the budgets with what was actually applied to the tax bills. So there are adjustments on revenues and expenditures on that item. And the last item is with Moreno Valley Utility, following the refunding of the taxable lease revenue bonds, we're reducing some of the debt service payments to reflect the new payment schedule. And with that, that concludes staff's report.
Thank you, Marshall. And I don't know if you mentioned it also, the finance committee passed it.
Yes, on October 24th, it went through the finance subcommittee.
All right. Any council questions? Councilmember Marquez?
Yeah, I just want to say, you're doing a great job, Marshall, you and your staff. That's why, I guess, we're cops in financial and the fiscal years, and you're doing a great job out there. I might hire you to do my financial checkbook here. But I just want to say thank you for doing a great job, you and your staff.
Okay, go to public comments.
None.
Okay. Any council deliberation? Okay, I'll close it. Oh, you have a council deliberation?
Just one.
Okay.
And you're wearing your road ring.
Okay. All right. I entertain a motion by council.
I'll move.
Okay. Motion by Gaiba, and a second by Councilmember Marquez. All right, please vote. And it passes 5-0. We'll move on to item G4, which is adoption of a resolution for Parks and Community Services' user fee schedule for fiscal year 2017, 2018, report of Parks and Community Services.
Mayor, Mayor Potem and council. Kevin Callister, our supervisor, will provide you with the staff report.
Hey there, Kevin.
Good evening. Mayor, Mayor Potem and council member, thank you for having me. This evening, the Parks and Community Services Department respectfully submits a resolution to update our department's user fee schedule. Our department is updating our registration software. We currently use software that is over 16 years old and will lose vendor support by the end of the year. Our new software is ActiveNet. As part of the implementation of the software, we completed a review of our department's fee schedule. It should be noted that there have been no major changes or increases, increases, I'm sorry, to our user fees since fiscal year 2007, 2008. And many fees are subsidized by the Zone 8 parcel tax previously mentioned that hasn't been increased since 1992. Within your report, we provide a draft of the proposed fee schedule. The major changes you will note or see are consolidation of current program and facility fees. Many of the program titles that we currently have are outdated and no longer represent our programs that we offer. The facility fees, on the other hand, were standardized internally and compared against market rates for local private and municipal facility fees. Other few key points, you'll note that we have an elimination of all of our current customer processing fees, which include $2 in-person and up to 6% online. This software update addresses the council's strategic plan, Objective 5.6.1, to implement a new and improved Parks and Community Services website, providing interactive and user-friendly applications for residents to reserve amenities and register for programs. This draft, the fee schedule draft, was reviewed by our youth sports advisory committee, by local youth nonprofits, and while not formally approved, I had many of them give the A-OK to go forward. With that, we also went to the Parks Recreation Commission, that it was approved, and also the finance subcommittee where we... the finance subcommittee where we received approval as well. Ending this proposed fee schedule creates a more streamlined and relevant representation of our programs and facilities, and will most effectively support the implementation of our new software. That concludes our report, and I'm open for questions, thank you.
Thank you, Kevin, for the report and thank you for coming. We'll have council questions of staff. We have Councilmember Gaiba.
Mel, how long have you been with Parks?
Six years.
And I think you've done a great job. What do you think of these fee changes?
They're great, they're timely, they're overdue.
I trust you, thank you.
No further questions, we'll go to public comments, Madam Clerk, and saw a speaker slip.
Rafael Bolgueras.
Rafael?
Thank you, Mayor, Mayor, councilmembers, staff, residents. I have to agree with Councilmember Marquez, when he mentioned earlier about things that they have to do as a mayor and a council to raise feeds. I couldn't print this down on my tablet or my PC last night to look at the numbers, and that's what I was just doing a little while ago. Residents, when you look at the packet for yourself and you see the dates of the last increase that Moreno Valley had in feeds, we are the lowest, and that's good for a little while, but what goes up are people's salaries and maintaining the fields and the lights and electricity. So when these feeds go up, and they will, it's to cover the cost of what we do in our city, to bring you the best of what we have, the fields, the lights, the safety, everything that we do for you comes with a price. So if tonight this gets approved, don't get disappointed, it's part of life. There are things that we have to do to increase our feeds, to make our city better, and the playgrounds safer for the kids and those that love to play soccer and baseball and things like that. So I understand when these feeds go up, and I want to thank Marquez for bringing that out earlier this evening, that we have to do things that pertain to the city, thank you.
Thank you, Rafael. We'll go to council deliberation. Seeing there's none, I entertain a motion by council. A motion by Councilmember Gaiba and a second by Councilmember Marquez. We'll go to, actually, we'll go to Mayor Pro Tem, Baca, for RCTC.
Okay, good evening, thank you. The Riverside County Transportation Commission, also known as RCTC, due in agreement with Caltrans, Riverside County Transportation Commission, will continue to manage and operate the highly successful freeway service patrol program in Riverside County through fiscal year 17, 18, or 2017, 2018. The purpose of the freeway service patrol program is to provide continuously roving tow service along designated freeway segments to relieve congestion and facilitate the rapid removal of disabled vehicles on our freeways. Currently, four tow truck operators provide service Monday through Friday during the peak commute hours. In fiscal year 2016, 2017, the program performed 36,842 assists, thank you.
Okay, Councilmember Marquez, Riverside Transit Agency?
Thank you, Mayor. Well, RTA has a lot going between now and Christmas, but the RTA agency will be hosting the California Transit Association 52nd Annual Fall Convention and Expo taking place November 8th through the 10th at the Riverside Convention Center. The event will bring together some of the best expertise in public transportation to explore new business opportunities. Also to improve customer service and show the highlights of new technology in these businesses. The three-day event will feature numerous presentations from the industry experts to address today's transportation challenges. For more information, you can go to www.caltrans.org. In addition, beginning November 24th, RTA will offer a free shuttle that connects downtown Riverside MetroLink station to the annual Fiesta of Lights event. The shuttle will operate on Friday and Saturdays for four weeks, offering afternoon and evening services from the train station to the festival. The shuttle will run from 3:00 to 10:00 PM with service every 15 minutes, so you don't have to wait around, connecting the MetroLink during the event, that concludes my report, thank you.
Thank you, we have Councilmember Gaiba, Western Riverside County Regional Conservation Authority.
Thank you, not much, it's pretty, it's pretty basic, we had a little discussion on the weasel, every now and then, every time we have a meeting, they always give us a spotlight on a particular animal. He's not an endangered species, but it was very interesting to hear about the little guy. The question did come up, is that now because he eats small rodents, how does that affect the Stevens kangaroo rat issue? And they couldn't really respond to that one, but it was a good question asked by the vice chair. We had several in closed session, so can't tell you what really went on in closed session, but what I can tell you is that we had some property acquisitions that we had to go over, and one of them that was of concern to our planning, Department Allen's group and stuff of obviously, was the property acquisition that holds our letter M and our cell towers. And I will let you know that the right-of-ways are in place, and so access is not going to be interrupted in any way, shape, or form. Additionally, just a quick note about after these other property acquisitions were made, we're now up to somewhere in the neighborhood of 57,744 acres so far for the property, that's about a third of what we need roughly to fulfill the obligation for the amount of property. Okay, that's good.
All right, and then the Southern California Association of Governments, SCAG?
Thank you, having fun here. Just a little preface so that you understand what I'm going to discuss and how important it is for you to understand this component. SCAG is a regional planning authority for 191 cities and six counties in the Southern California region. They produce what's called the RTPSCS, Regional Transportation Sustainable Communities Strategy. Within that is the legal confirmations from the state and the federal government to actually, or actually the state more, and State California Air Resources Board, that so many, you know, any carb has to be reduced. So the last one that went through, and this is important for you to understand, the last one that went through, we were given a 13% reduction in our region. So as a regional planning authority, RCTC doesn't make any moves without it, RTA doesn't make any moves without it, they all wait for the planning authority to give them the information on what's going on. Mike, you know pretty much about this, I keep you up to date. So as a result, they're given these numbers, said, hey, reduce the carbon output, global warming issue, by 13%. So they put together a master plan, how much it's going to cost, the whole bit, and they exceeded it. So SCAG exceeded those numbers, as a matter of fact, I think it was to the tune of 18%. So now our new two-year projection to 2020, CARB came back and said, okay, you did it good the first time, you really exceeded it, so we're going to really hit you with an exceed. They want us to go to 21%. The staff at SCAG is adamant that that's not achievable. I mean, we'll try to achieve it. See, I sit on the transportation committee, so a lot of that comes through because it's the regional transportation plan. Here's one thing that the public doesn't know, and I don't think a lot of us knew, electeds when we were there until we got into this heavy discussion. Your SB1 funds for your region are tied to that number. If we accept a 21% reduction and we know we can't make it, and we don't make it, all your tax dollars that went to the gas pump for all our neighbors that run around in our region goes away because it's tied to the SB1 funds. Yeah, I know, I did the same thing, Mike, I said, what? And we're all going, how could you possibly do that? So what's happening right now is a lot of dialogue going on with CARB and SCAG, Asana Crata, about a reasonable number, something that we could achieve, because if not, we put ourselves in jeopardy and we put our taxpayers at jeopardy. Because all the money that you're pumping in, because we have 70% commuters just here in Moreno Valley alone, you may not get the option of having that money usable locally for yourself. So that was the important conversation, and that went on for a long time, so I thought I'd share that with you. Coming up now also is the economic summit, I'll be gone the next couple of days to the SCAG Economic Summit down in Los Angeles. And then I have several other subcommittees, one is the Big Data Open Data Legislative Action Committee, the Oversight Committee that I'll still be doing for the rest of this month too, so I'll get back on those reports for you as I attend those meetings. All right, I think that's about it, thank you.
City managers' report?
Thank you, Mayor, Mayor Pro Tem, members of the city council, a couple of brief items. I wanted to very gladly report to you that your Moreno Valley Utility has won yet another award. The American Public Power Association recently notified the city that MVU has received an award for excellence in public power communications. This is based on the annual report, which was submitted to this group for consideration for the first time, and we became, we came out victorious. So I want to congratulate the council, the utility commission, Marshall Ironman, Jeanette Olko, the whole MVU team, and also Larry Jaime, who's our design, our graphics designer, did all of that in-house. That award will be presented up in Sacramento, and so Jeanette will be bringing that back to the council to add to your growing trophy case. If you'll indulge me, I'd like to thank your city staff and congratulate them as well. We just finished the month of October, which is our annual employee giving campaign, through a number of different events and activities, your employees donate money, they go to two local charities, just in one month, your employees raised over $5,000 out of their generosity through different activities such as our annual department feud game, this is based on Family Feud. I'd like to congratulate Alan Brock and the Community Development Department for being victorious this year. Also, I'd like to, on behalf of the city manager's office, let you know that we won the best group contest in our Halloween contest, and also your very own city attorney won best costume. I will leave it at that, I won't describe that costume to you. But thank you to the employees for, again, their generous nature. Momentum mobile, I'm preparing an update on your strategic plan to present to you on December 5th, and I'd like to congratulate Mel Alonso, he's given a couple of reports already this evening, but we'd like to congratulate him on his appointment as the Parks and Community Services Director. Mel has been with the city for 12 years, he came to us with a breadth of experience already, he's highly educated, you might not know this about Mel, he has a bachelor's degree in public administration, he has a teaching credential, he has a law degree, and in his spare time, he also picked a masters, picked up a master's degree in public administration. So on behalf of the whole team, we congratulate Mel and welcome him to the executive management team. And then my last item for your consideration, Mayor, Mayor Pro Tem and Council, I wanted to see if you would consider canceling your November 21st regular meeting, we don't have items, anything that we, we're going to bring on the 21st can wait to the 5th, that's the Tuesday before Thanksgiving, it is a meeting that in the past has been canceled sometimes, so I'd like to bring that up for your consideration as well. That concludes my report.
That's fine for me, I don't know how the rest of the council feels. Okay, all right, and city attorneys' report?
Thank you, Mayor, nothing tonight, thank you.
All right, and then we'll have closing comments, Councilmember Gaiba? Okay, Councilmember Marquez? And we'll come back.
Yeah, Martin, that costume you wore, I think we have a picture of that here somewhere. Really? Don't embarrass me, just kidding. Lots been going on here in Moreno Valley, and I'm glad I'm part of it. We just had Jerome's Furniture open up, a new business, and I was honored to help cut the ribbon this past week, and I went there the next day, and that place was full, I mean, they had so many people in there. There was customers waiting for salespeople to take care of them, and that's a good sign, something that's overdue, and I want to shout out to Mike, Alan, you guys did a fantastic job. I spoke to the owner and his family, and they just could not tell, I mean, they just couldn't get over the amazing efforts you guys put into it. You promised them certain things and you met those promises, and that's, that's great to hear, that is fantastic. That gets out to other potential businesses coming to Moreno Valley, and again, I want to say thank you for your, your, your great work that you did. But it's a good business, I'm just going to put a little thing in for them, go shop there, you'll be surprised, you'll be surprised. I've been asked a lot about the Hyundai dealer, I spoke to Mike today, there's some confidential stuff that I'm not going to get into, but they plan on opening up here within this month, Mike, by this month, we'll see some cars out there, so I'll put another plug in for them, if you need a car, go see Mr. Brown, he'll work with you. And I think a lot of their employees are Moreno Valley residents, so I want to thank Mike, if you're out there watching on your TV, thank you, and I met him and his wife several weeks ago, and they're fantastic people. Veterans Day, I wish everybody can come out and honor our veterans. I'm a veteran, Vietnam War, and it brings tears to my eyes still when I see these veterans out here that they come back with missing parts, missing limbs. It hurts me to see that, and I was blessed to come back in one piece. The lady spoke tonight about the spouses. I spent seven years, the first four years was overseas, so yes, my wife was home by herself, raised her, at that time, we had the two kids, and went on the way, but I could feel for her about the spouses. This Veterans Day, when you see a member out there, you know, congratulate their spouse too, that would really make, make them happy, and believe me, these veterans out there really welcome that when they're, when they're recognized, and a small thank you to them for their service, really goes a long ways. Other than that, I want to say to our staff, my staff out here, everybody, you guys have been doing a great job, I have no complaints from the residents, I take it because we're doing a good job, that nobody's calling in and complaining anymore, so thank you very much, that's all I have.
Councilmember Cabrera?
Thank you, just a couple of comments here, Tom is still back there in the crowd, he brought up the Film Festival, and we are working to try to bring that back for next year, because it was completely successful, you know, we had Edward James Olmos, we had art, we had an amazing turnout, we had student films from Valley View, from the Valverde School District as well, so that was really nice to see that, you know, our youth is coming out and they're getting an opportunity to shine, and, you know, to speak, and for us to get their perspective, because that's really important, I mean, they're, they're the future, and I went to Valley View, so I was, it was a little emotional to see the youth come out and show their films. Also, they're not here anymore, but the group of kids that came out and talked about the skate park, I know our staff is working, you know, they're always working hard, but right now, they, they're working on a general plan update. right now, they, they're working on a general plan update, and that's not an easy process, and it also takes a little bit of time. So I've been going to the high schools, so I've actually gone to one, Valley View. Next year, I'll be going, next week, I'll be going to Vista del Lago and Canyon Springs. And we're asking the students, you know, what, what do you love about Moreno Valley? And what would you change about Moreno Valley? And one thing that came up many times at Valley View, and this is only one high school, we still have three more to go, they kept asking for a skate park and more, more areas to be outside and play and just be outdoors. So I'm glad to hear that again, and I'm trying to, trying to work on that, you know, trying to see how we can do that in addition to a new library, so. Also, today at Moreno Valley College, we had a doctor, I forget his last name, but he's from Harvard, and he came out, he was talking about his book, Lives in Limbo, that talks about pretty much immigrants. And it's, it's, it's pretty emotional, too, because, you know, my parents and a lot of us here in this room probably have deep roots in that. It's, it's been going on for decades, and it's a big issue right now. It's something that's being debated up at the very top, and it's important because a lot of these people are active members here of our communities, especially here in Moreno Valley, I mean, over sixty percent. And so he was just talking about, you know, all the, the growing up, what the youth encounter and the difficulties, you know, they can go to school and, and get their degrees, but then when it comes time to apply for a job, you know, they don't have social security numbers. They don't have these things that bar them, people that have master's degrees and even PhDs, they can't get jobs. And so I'm just glad that he came out and spoke to all of the youth here in Moreno Valley College. Lastly, I do want to thank the staff as well. I know we've been, we got a lot on our plate right now, but we're in this together. When was this? I think last week at the Emerging Leaders Council, we had a staff member come out and give us a presentation on the Adopt a Street program. Thank you, Michelle. I know we've been talking about that for a while, so I'm also glad that the city is helping for any independent cleanups. You know, they're giving bags, gloves, trash grabbers and all that stuff, so just thank you guys for everything that you're doing, and let's keep the momentum moving.
Okay, council member Geiva?
Thank you very much. First of all, Rafael, I don't know whether you want to apologize or not, I'll leave that up to you entirely, but you were accusing David Marquez. I don't think you remember correctly what happened that evening. They asked for a voice vote, and if you watched the way they asked for it, our clerk always asks me for my vote first. So when she asked for a voice vote because our things weren't working properly, I said no. Now, what anybody else does after that's their business, but I don't think it was proper for you to be accusing him and me of something that never took place, all right? So I just want to let you know that that was inaccurate that you portrayed. And David, wait a minute, I always let you talk, and I don't think I ever talk out of turn on you. So anyway, also, a little bit of understanding about the ordinances. The twelve-months ordinance gives the staff time to write the ordinances. If they're going to do a good ordinance, if they're going to do good licensing and good regulations, I remember the attorney specifically saying, we'd like enough time to do the job. And here's the case. If the ordinance is set for twelve months, but all the ordinances, you know, the illegality is for one, for one year, twelve months, but they get the ordinances done in six months, then am I correct, attorney? The ordinances and all the legal things take precedent over the twelve-month timeline? So the idea of wanting to have it longer is to give our staff appropriate time to write good, good, good ordinances, good licensing information and stuff like that. So that was the premise behind that, not to rush it. So I needed to make that clear to you so that you understand it and the public understands it. By the way, Candace Castle, she's not here now, I want to give her a shout out. She works with Community Services District, well, it's the Landscape Service District now. And every year, she comes out with her children, her sons, and one of them's eighteen now, forgoes her running time just so that she can help out in Hidden Springs on their annual cleanup in the Paseo region. So she did that again, and they had a very small turnout this time, word didn't get out as well. But Candace is there every year, right beside the residents, which I think is just marvelous, and I wanted to let her know that. Robert Palomeros, you're not here, but you, I just want to correct you, no, this is my third year, not my second year. Okay, so I just wanted to let you know that, just so that you get it correct. If you're going to say it, you got to have it correct. Now, let me let you know what I've been trying to do this year for you, this month for you. Yeah, let me get this over here for you. So here's what I've been up to. Salvation Army Appreciation Luncheon, that was on the nineteenth of October, attended that, it was really terrific. City of Wildemar had their State of the City address also on October the nineteenth. Honor Our Heroes program, I was attending that as well. March of Flight, a thing over at March Air Force Base, celebrating at the March Film Museum, celebrating one hundred years of the March Air Force Base. Also attended the UCR Center for Economic Forecast. The Boy Scouts of America, that was on, both of those on the twenty-fifth. Lights on after school at Seneca Elementary, I went over there with them guys and, and had a good time with them because they invited me to come over to Seneca, and that's over there on the western side. Saturday, the twenty-eighth, both David Marquez, and I don't think he forgot to say something about that, but, but both David Marquez and I attended the Veterans Recognition Program over at the college. It was a wonderful opportunity, right, David? And then that afternoon, went over to the park to work with the Music Changing Lives to give them a proclamation for the first lights out on after-school unity. And then that evening was Give Cancer the Boot, which was in Riverside, invited by Jamil Dada. So that one was busy as well. Then I, as of right now, we're in Halloween, I've got the SCAG Transportation Committee that I attended for you, and Third Annual Veterans Scholarship, and I could keep on going for you. Why do I say that? Just to let you know that I'm busy on your behalf, and I'll continue to be busy on your behalf, both here and outside. Thank you, and have a wonderful evening.
Next person is Mayor Protem Baca.
Thank you, Mayor. I just wanted to piggyback on what Councilman Cabrera mentioned about the Latino Film Festival, and I want to say thank you to staff and everyone else that worked on this event. It's, it was a first annual or fourth annual, but the first time here in Moreno Valley, and I hope that we can host this event again next year. I was involved with Dr. Connie Martinez and helped her with some of the fundraising, and I also had a good friend of mine, actor Pepe Serna show up, who was also a good friend of Eddie Olmos, so I was really happy about that. I want to commend the youth that came to the podium tonight, came up in a group, presented very well, and the skate park is something that I'm looking forward to. I know that we're going to work on that, and it's true that the one at the JPA, it's pretty far for the kids that live far away from there. It's, I've been there to pick up my grandson, and after nine o'clock, the lights are off. So it's, it's something that we should be looking forward to, and we'll, we'll talk more about that. But I just want to show the kids that it's something that we take too hard, and I just think that it was fabulous that they brought the petitions, that they were out there collecting signatures to show the council that this is something that, that's very dear and very needed for them. Also want to mention that we are having our Veterans Day event on Saturday at nine-thirty a.m., Saturday, November the eleventh, and please come out. I want to remind everyone that it's an outdoor event, so, so we don't have the same thing that happened at the Dia de los Muertos where it was freezing. Bring your hats, your sunglasses, wear pants, bring your jackets, because the, the weather might be cold that early in the morning, so hope to see you there. Thank you.
Thank you. And I'd just like to also thank the staff as well for the Latin Film Festival in helping with that. I know Shanna helped a lot, and Pat as well, and Michelle, you attended a lot of the meetings, the committee meetings, so thank you. And, you know, it was a little rough at first, you know, to get some of the things going, but we finally got it going, and, and we had a successful event. I also helped with Mayor Protem Baca with some of the fundraising as well, and then this council in general helped as well by sponsoring the event for the Harkins, so thank you again. I want to thank the kids that came from Valley View. I don't know if they were all from Valley View, but, or some of the schools, as far as their petitions, they said that they had over a thousand signatures, so I would really like for us to work on their request and see where, maybe in current parks that we have, for example, on the East End. I was talking to someone in the audience, they were mentioning that in their petition, it says the East End. So see, maybe in the East End, or maybe in our future parks that we have, that we incorporate a skate park there. So I think we need to do that for them. And also, I want to encourage everyone to come out to the Veterans Day event, which will be this Friday, I'll be presiding over that event. It's going to be a great, great event. And Saturday, yeah, Saturday, okay? So thank you so much, and have a great night.